No, I'm usually the first one here. No, if you want to know anything about commercial development and stuff, the open house is on Monday at seven o'clock.
Oh, here.
Yeah. And that's when they're gonna talk about some proposed, they're just proposed areas and it's not all the areas. It's just to get some idea from the public, how they feel about expanding the commercial zone and where.
Okay. How you doing? Yeah, I'm up right. Yeah, that's good. I like the temperature.
You can always move over a little bit.
Why don't we call everybody? Did he come here and set that up or?
I don't have a clue. It genuinely does. And then as far as tearing down, there is the party. We'll be using the same hall on Saturday. So I would assume they might probably have some tables up. I think they just wanna put chairs away. I don't know.
Yeah. They'll probably use chairs also too, so.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess we could just take down the necessities and... And I told her since nobody's using it on Friday, I said that they could come on Friday.
Cool.
I don't know, Shane wants these or how many he wants.
Joe get ahold of Shane today or?
I have no clue. I do not. I don't even know if we need this because I don't know that there's anybody who might speak in it.
I wouldn't think so. How's Willie doing?
Don't see anybody in the winter day.
Oh.
Except the coffee up there.
Hello.
Oh, how you doing, sir?
How you doing? What you got on your table? Do you think we need this? Okay, I didn't see either.
Is the pressure on that side?
Is the branch running outside?
On that side.
Well, as far as I'm aware.
Fifty something degrees.
Says something. Well, he said he turned it up in the kitchen because it was super cold in there.
That was fifty four.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
I had a bit of a cough.
Everybody's been sick, coughing.
Yeah, first my oldest got sick, the youngest got sick, I got sick.
I know, like, these people, they don't have their ball in the air.
It's not just here, like, I'm talking to a company I do work for in California today and half their upper management is all sick.
Oh.
Well, I guess I'm glad I got mine over early.
Yeah.
Maybe I won't get it again.
Yeah, I got a blue chat too, but I don't.
I've never got one, so I don't have.
I don't think I have.
Oh, okay, that's cool.
Yeah, I just can't chill, cough.
Okay. I brought three. I didn't know how many you wanted, but there is more in the basement.
Uh, I think three's probably good.
Okay.
Yep.
So I didn't set up the third one though, yeah?
Yeah, I have more boards than that, but I don't think we need them all set up at the same time, so.
So I didn't know where you wanted to put them either.
Yeah, I don't know. Either we don't need really the camera to see them or do you want the camera to see them?
Never really shows up anyway. No, you have to like zoom in so much. It's really hard, so I think if you just... And then when they, when you have the public hearings anyways, you'll have exhibits and then people can see them then.
Right.
You can make a announcement, like, I was gonna say everything's at City Hall reviewing. Yeah, because you can always send me copies of the maps and PDF.
Yeah, they're included where you can build it, so.
Oh, yeah, that's true. So then that, then we wouldn't have to worry so much about it. It's not running?
I turned this one up and popped the one on, so.
This last year. I don't know that, like TJ Maxx or something for eighty bucks.
Oh, that's my favorite store, that and Marshall's. I always tell my kids, never gave it to you.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I've ever went to like Old Ford.
Who's the name of the company that we have to get?
Air Comfort?
Is it Air Comfort?
Yeah.
Nobody's wanting to come for our repair or just to call.
It should be in the works, you should.
Yeah. You have the numbers?
Yeah.
So go home.
That's better stuff.
Joe get ahold of you yet today?
Joe called me, left a message today.
Okay.
Also like in the west.
Yeah. Yeah. I looked at the original plan and it's twenty-two feet or should be the whole way, but.
Okay. So must just be, do we? We had to go twenty-four feet wide with the, with the block covered in? That was probably just to meet state rules to that six hundred.
Okay, yeah, yeah. But he measured in a few spots, it's not even twenty-two feet.
Oh, really? Well, that could be much up wrong.
For the typical sections for all of, the whole way is twenty-two feet, yeah.
What did he say?
He's gonna call me.
Late night reading?
Huh?
Late night reading?
Yeah.
You ice fishing last week? You going south?
No way. I'm gonna have to go outside.
Oh.
Did you go?
No, next week.
Some guys who were up in Redland last week.
Yeah, everybody's been doing really good up there. It's for all being a week. One time I got up there was four below and we got there. The furnace went run, the ice auger went start, because everything froze up. Yeah, the propane was frozen in front of fish house.
Guy, when I used to go fishing up in Northwest Territory, the guy that owned our camp had, I tell, he tell, that for the construction workers that'd be in the winter, and said there'd be stretches where it'd be sixty below. And he says the propane frees pretty hard at forty-five.
Yeah.
And he said, you see guys out there trying to warm up the propane to try and get their furnaces turned. It always looked like something was gonna explode.
That two B would knock about twenty-seven thousand off the fuel.
That's what I figured, yeah.
How much?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Did you figure paving on each street approach going to the end radius at least, or?
Not really, I mean, we have, we figure out the exact quantity based on two inches and multiply by ten percent. So it's a little bit, you never pave exactly two inches.
Yeah.
And so we have a little bit of extra quantity and probably not enough. You know, sometimes it's nicer to go a hundred feet or.
Yeah, it'd be nice to go to the, at least end radius or maybe like fifty feet.
Sure.
So keeps the ground low.
Fifty feet from the edge, so.
Yeah.
We'll get started here. You join us in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. City Council Workshop, City of Now Then, Tuesday. Thursday, January fourth, 2018, seven o'clock. I'll start with planning and zoning. Brent Hedberg, Greg Lindgren, Greg Lindner Lindgren. Quest for a lot split. Liz, you wanna?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, we finally gotten the information we needed on soil borings and elevations so Shane could determine flood protection elevations and lowest floor was satisfactory. So with his approval, that gets us to you. I would recommend one change on the findings of fact, the city council version. Number one is referencing soil boring information. That's already been submitted, so what I'd like to do is replace that number one by requiring the required dedication of road easement for Jarvis Street. Certainly, it's a prescriptive easement and they'll dedicate the thirty-three feet as part of this subdivision.
Would you guys write that? All right. Anything else?
That is it. Our office would recommend approval.
All right, council, anything on that? So you'll make the changes accordingly for the council meeting on Tuesday?
Yes.
All right. Seeing, hearing nothing from the council. I'd say that looks good and we'll move forward. Council Plan Open House.
So I just created a sort of a summary memo just so we could go over any final details if we need to for Monday's meeting. And that's also so the residents could see what's kind of on tap for Monday. Mostly want you to just approve, I'm talking about displaying two large land use maps with the possible commercial industrial expansion areas. So basically draft 2040 plans at this time and then an aerial photo of the city in case we need to refer to it. And the traffic volume maps. The question was whether you wanna show those three options that we had included for the diversified rural. Option one was keeping it the same location as the previous Musa area. Option two was sort of a natural resource option which followed the creek. And then option three was more of an agricultural preservation option. And these are not set in stone, but it is one thing we have to decide before we move forward with our comp plan.
Mr. Mayor.
I've never been here.
I'd like to see if some options all go away. The city of Oak Grove had a large section in their city that was the same designation and they actually had a state law, got some legislation passed to have that removed. And I'd like to see us, if need be, take that same step. It's, it's, I don't think it's needed to be setting. I mean, if you're setting wetlands aside, it's just, they really don't need the land set aside for future sewer system then. And they've said it, it's not proposed to come out here, so why, why should we be setting land aside for that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brian?
I would agree with council member Benjer, especially after seeing that Oak Grove just got rid of theirs. I don't, and unless, we had that discussion when they were here about do we really need this and they said they'd like it, but, but unless there's a need for it, why bother?
I agree. I mean, I, I, I mean, my opinion is, is that why don't we just revisit the whole thing in ten years? When we do our next comp plan? If you're not providing services to us, then let's take another look at it. Let's not just kind of guess at anything and, you know, we have no idea services, if they ever came, could come from four different directions. So it's kind of silly to guess at it. I am in the process of trying to find out more information as to even, even a ballpark as to what it may have cost Oak Grove to do that. I did find out who the state representative was or is and I have not been successful yet at getting a copy of that law, how it reads and what it exactly it was, so. Not sure I can have that by Monday either, but we'll try.
Might be able to help you with that. Give me a call tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, so we'll just then display the land use map with the commercial industrial expansion areas. And then the only other question I had was, do we wanna provide any eight and a half by eleven copies for residents to take? My only worry would be that we have that area, you know, kind of labeled possible. We don't want anyone to think that we are expanding the commercial industrial, you know, to that large of an area. But it's up to you, we do. If you wanna distribute anything, is what I mean, in a smaller size.
Have you heard anything from the property owners that were notified?
No, none of them.
I think Anoka County has their traffic forecast for the 2040 plan out. And I don't have would be.
Do they now? Have you? I haven't seen.
Seen it. I know it's out. I don't know if they've approved it, but I know it's.
They, uh, all I've seen is a single map with some projected traffic volumes. I haven't seen any report text or anything like that yet.
Right, it's just a map of a, of the whole county.
Right.
Traffic projections, yeah.
Yeah, I have seen that.
And didn't you take these copies from that or not? Or were these older?
No, these are existing.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so you're talking about projected.
Yes.
Okay.
Which, we're kind of looking at the future too, so the two kind of go together.
Oh, yeah, certainly. I'll look that up.
I could try to remember to send it to you on Monday. I have it on my computer.
Okay, great.
Name's Chris Hunker, is that sound right? The consultant that's.
I'm not sure who's handling the 2040 plan for the highway plan.
So what are the traffic maps actually telling us?
These are the counts. On these roads, oh, I guess I didn't print the, well, yeah, here's a. The red dot means that's the location the traffic count was conducted. Let's see. So the red ones, well, I'm looking at this first page that shows Sherburne and Anoka. So the red line means that was, those were conducted in 2014. The pink line, um, which would be part of Ba there, was done in 2016. And then the blue were all done in 2015. It is interesting to note the seventy-two hundred cars on 181st between Ba and the city limits. That is actually a higher traffic count than cars on Highway 47.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, I actually helped print of those maps and I was surprised to learn that that's basically our busiest road in town. It's, I didn't see, I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time looking at the map, but I didn't see any other roads that had a higher traffic volume.
So it's interesting because the roads leading up to it barely add up to that. You got forty-one fifty, twenty-five fifty. You know, assuming that the eighteen fifty, some of those people are going, or some are going south, maybe.
Right, that's a.
Seventy-two hundred, you got pretty much everybody on this map funneling down through there.
Right, and they, they go to that intersection and then go different ways.
And the surprising thing is, if you go up to twenty-two and Viking Boulevard there, you've got fifty-seven hundred from our four-way stop there on Ba to the county line and then we lose fourteen hundred somewhere, thirteen hundred and fifty, turn off there before they get over to Twin Lakes. Now, maybe that's just the disparity in the years, you know, between 2014 and 2016 when those traffic counts were done, but fourteen hundred people hanging out in the park down there.
They got the church on the corner too.
And then they go south, get to the cities or whatever, get to work.
Mr. Mayor, I found the projected traffic volume map on my phone. The 2040 projection is nine thousand four hundred for 181st.
Nine thousand.
Which really doesn't.
West of Ba?
West of Ba.
West of Ba, correct.
Which really doesn't surprise me because that's your, your main artery from all of Ramsey into Elk River, from all of anything, you know, east there going into Elk River. That's the main artery.
Right.
So is it possible to get the, the updated ones by Monday?
Oh, yeah, we can print that for the meeting. That's projected, so this is actual.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm projecting.
So you have that, so you don't need me to resend it here?
Yeah, I, I have the.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you get an email or was it on their website?
It's an email.
Oh, okay.
It says you can call it right now.
Okay, great.
So what's the middle map?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, the one, the, the middle one says now then, take now then, the middle of it, what is?
Well, that just shows the...
East side.
Yeah, more of the east side and the now then Boulevard, 22 intersection.
A little more condensed.
Do you remember if these green dots, Shane, were newer, like this year or anything? Because they have the blue. Well, I'll be sure to get the key, the keys that correspond to each map, and then we won't have any questions as to what they mean.
Yeah, Liz, if I recall correct, these maps were from the MINDOT website. So they have a, a website where you can go in and check on, basically, any state aid route, you're required to submit traffic counts to MINDOT. I believe this one, it might be an Elk County map.
Okay.
So it's as far as the form, the survey, how many of these copies of this do you plan on having?
Um, that's a good question. Maybe, I don't know, 30 to 50, somewhere in there? I don't know. Okay, just, just in case.
So you're gonna have people that property isn't in there, but they're gonna answer the second question. And the third question and the fourth question. All right, council, have any other questions or comments?
We didn't respond to, yes, she should have copies of the map available for people to take.
Eight and a half by 11 size or not? Or if we should just wait until we get it more defined?
I would, I would expect we'd want to define it more, because you get it out there, even though you clearly state this is just for discussion and it's possible, I think once, you know, there's gonna be copies of it out there anyway, but once it's out there saying, here's what they're gonna do, the, the less you have out there that gives people the suggestion that's what's gonna happen, probably the better.
That's why I brought it up, that was kind of my thought, too.
That'd be my opinion, council, and if anybody disagrees?
I'd rather not have, I'd rather have as much accurate information of what really is going to be in the 2040 plan available. And if we're still in the middle of changes, probably better not to have this map.
For distribution, yeah. I mean, some people are gonna print it anyway and have it or bring it or whatever, but yeah. So after we get another draft 2040 plan, we can certainly post it, or have, you know, it'll be available at the next open house. Okay, well, those are all the questions I had. Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to tell Mr. Hedberg that the formal decision will be on Tuesday. So, yeah, okay, you're just hanging out.
Yeah. I'm more fascinated by that second.
The land, land. Well, that's fine. We like to have an audience once in a while.
Bless you. Excuse me. All right. And then you had one code enforcement.
Yep, just a minor update. I've got a couple that I know need to be addressed, I was waiting till after the holidays.
Is this currently settled, or just anticipating a...
Yeah, it seems to be under control.
Reoccupation?
Seems to be under control right now, that one.
We're keeping an eye on all of our storage silos. You see Elk Grove?
Mm-hmm.
There's a fire in there.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Consent agenda items. Comments on the financial report? The council's information, if you hadn't heard, we did purchase a 2005 light duty rescue truck in the New York, Pennsylvania area. Is that here yet?
No, it won't be here until...
You seen the pictures of it, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
So we put a down payment on it, it'll be delivered at the end of the month. I think that included the toll bill, didn't it?
Yes.
Recycling center is pretty much complete. A question on the garage door repairs. Was that in the recycling center, or is that that?
I think there was a minor repair too, the rec, but the main repair was the one at the city offices, the, one of the back doors, the big door.
Got associated with our bumper, is that separate from? Associated with our bump last summer, or is that separate?
I think it's...
It's been an ongoing problem. They've got a one where the door will just quit, and they finally figured it out, they had a dead spot in the quarter, so they had to replace them over. Good job, and just quit, and then one go up and down, so...
That's not good in cold weather.
Nope.
All right, item 1.3, resolutions adopting appointments. Comments there?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Brian?
I guess I'm okay with leaving things the way they were from last year.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert?
As far as this, you know, one thing, looking at this city newspaper, we still have no idea what cost there may be, you know, obviously last year, oh, I missed that then.
I was gonna say, there wasn't.
Sorry. I'll have a look at that. And I, and another comment along that line, I am disappointed in the fact that, you know, if that is our city official newspaper, we had one of our biggest attended meetings when it came to a land use issue, and the paper decided to, instead of writing an article about something along that lines, they chose to write an article about how a candidate didn't report, you know, a few hundred dollars that were spent on a campaign, you know. Again, to me, if we choose them as our official paper, it does reflect upon us. And again, the purpose of choosing them as a paper is to let our residents know what's going on. And again, the issue at hand, and, and, in my opinion, was more people were concerned about the possible land use change than the article they chose to put in the paper. And, you know, and then again, in my opinion, none of the articles that they do write about the city are necessarily written in any positive light or in a light that, in my opinion, informs our citizens of, you know, what may or may not be coming up. And I think that reflects poorly on the city.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about that, because I, I mean, I know in working with the Elk River paper, they, they welcome submitted articles, and I'm wondering if, if we should do a better job making sure, because as you've seen, they don't come to our meetings anymore, they don't really attend much out here. But I know that, you know, in, in different groups I've been associated with in the past, if we wanted something in the Elk River paper, we pretty much wrote the article, submitted it for them to edit it to size and, and put in the paper. So I think that we could probably do a better job, too, making sure that things are important to us. Either we notify them, you should be here for this, or we submit the article ourselves and say, this is some information. And, and I would say that whether it's the record or the union, technically, I don't think we can have the Elk River paper, even though that's the same owners, but I think it's because it's a different county. But if we want, I know the farmers market does that, if they want information, they, they'll draft the article and send it to them, so I think we can certainly do a better job that way, pointing out what we want to see covered. And I think they're quite willing to, to publish articles that have submitted, too, so, at least from the live scene of it, it looks like that a lot of their stuff is submitted, so, I, I understand. I think, you know, if that's the decision, we certainly can do a better job that way, too. I, I agree that, you know, the positive things that go on here, I would like to see something on the threshing show, something on open houses, something on positive things that are going on with the city, to publicize it. And it's not their job to publicize it, but that's one of the things people do look for, paper, to accentuate the good things that are going on. And, as you say, concerns to the residents, that probably was the highest attended meeting, you know, since this council has been together, so it would make sense to cover that in detail. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian?
I'm, you know, from a, from a revenue perspective, the Union Herald decided to raise the rates over last year, and thus they're chart, and they're only charging the county $2 per inch instead of the $10.75 that they'd be charging us. If we just used what we would have had to pay using the 2017 articles, we're, you know, if we, if we did change it, we'd be spending four times more on the Union Herald versus the record.
And, and if I'm hearing right, that's, you know, Paul's not against saving money, it's the representation of the city that, that I'm hearing you most concerned about?
Yeah, that's one of the biggest parts, yes.
So I, I, I don't think there's a debate on the cost. I think if they're gonna continue to represent us, it would, we need to communicate, we need positive coverage of important things to the city. You know, as, as much as, I don't know how many newspapers are gonna do what you tell them to, but I think that's an important consideration. So, but yes, there's, there's significant cost savings. I, I was thinking maybe with the new ownership at ABC Newspaper that we might see something a little more competitive, like the county did. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton?
Again, I'll just state again, I'd, I'd love to be the liaison for the Road and Bridge Committee, I think I'm more qualified than anybody else sitting in the council, and understand that. Probably a minority of people feel that we ever want to vote that way, but I still want to make it known that I think I'm more qualified than, than Dan that's serving under now, and I'd love to take that position back over.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert?
One last comment to kind of go along with that, I guess, you know, our committees now have been exposed to different council members as liaisons. You know, I think, you know, we should be asking them, you know, have they found, you know, one works differently, better, smoother, do your points in your committee get communicated better to the council with one other, the other, do, you know, and, and get their thoughts and opinions, you know? Obviously, those committees have to work with that liaison as well. So I think they should have some say in, you know, who represents them at the council meetings, regardless of whomever that is and whatever committee that is.
Anything else? All right. Hold ahead, here. Questions on responsible authority? Commissions and committees? Oh, I did have one thing on that first one, Corey. Building official, we need to drop to St. Francis. And I would like to use Andy's company name, probably.
Yeah, if we do the same for city planning, we probably should use...
Yeah. Committees and commissions, we have some openings. Any changes there? All right, fishing contest, that's pretty much what we've been asked in years past. Might have good solid ice this year. Any questions there? All right. Pay equity report. Corey, is anything in particular we need to know about this?
No, based off of the, the email that I indicated about the putting a pay scale together for state's purpose. Otherwise, for the most part, it's always been the same state point rating for each employee every, every time we've been submitting it.
And, and we've done well in the past?
Yeah. And...
In your contacts with other clerks, do you run any cities that are having problems with this anymore?
I guess that hasn't been a topic of discussion with any of them, so...
I would say it's pretty obvious what they're looking for. It'd be hard for us to screw up on them. I'm sorry, was there anything else you need to know?
Um, so if you guys are accepting to it next Tuesday, then we have to just post it that we're doing it, and we have to submit it to the state, and then, but that was what I can say, is I did, there was that already analysis that did, based on the information I submitted, and it looks like what we're proposing on submitting is in the plan, so...
All right. All right, feasibility report, Frederick Lake. Shane, do you like, say anything directly on it, or just answer questions, do you want...
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I can just give a, kind of a brief overview of the report. This is just a here, just kind of the, the map showing the starting and stopping locations of the project in red. We're proposing a, a Potuminus overlay to a two-inch constructive thickness. It's mostly finished yards in this area, so what we've identified in the feasibility report is a topsoil shoulder. That's kind of non-standard for some row applications, it's, but it's usually less controversial in finished yards. You know, that's something that some... You know, that's something that some, uh, cities and towns might do with rural roads is do an aggregate shoulder. Um, but we do have a topsoil shoulder included in our estimate. Really, there won't be a whole lot of work to driveways, so every time where we met a location of a Batuminus driveway, it'll just be milled back within one to two feet. And the Batuminus, the paving machine will basically, uh, put their wing out and pave that driveway with, with the mainline paving. So there would be a separate paving operation where they're paving each driveway and backing the paper into the, the driveway. Um, there are a couple of concrete driveways, uh, and for those, again, we won't be moving any concrete and replacing them. We'd probably do like a taper mill in front of the, the driveway. Maybe start 30 feet this side of the driveway, in front of the driveway, and then 30 feet beyond the driveway. And so we, at least we get the new Batuminus, uh, in front of the driveway.
So when you're saying you start before the driveway and after the, what does that mean?
So.
You guys would blend it in?
Right, it's kind of a way of blending it in. Concrete driveways can be a, a difficult thing to, to deal with because, you know, if we just went right past them without milling, you'd have a two-inch lip there at the, the road surface. So where the driveway came out and, and met the road, there'd be a, a two-inch lip that they'd have to contend with. Generally, what we try to do is, is mill at least an inch and a half and make that lip only about an inch and a half thick. So you end up, uh, like I said, milling before and after the driveway, what's called a taper mill, um, usually just done with a, a skid steer and an attachment. The other way to do it would be to remove, uh, sections of concrete driveway. The negative part about that is a lot of times you'll end up spending more than the assessment amount, uh, you know, putting the, the concrete driveway back in. Probably costs a few thousand dollars to do that for each driveway. A, a kind of a, a summary of the project, this is the, I'd say the more straightforward project of the two. Uh, our, our total estimated cost is 146,500. We did not include any financing costs in this project, and I wanted to call that to your attention because if the city decides to sell bonds, sometimes selling those bonds can be, you know, that can be a substantial fee from your financial advisor, 30, 40,000. And so with this report, I, you know, I'm not sure how the city plans on funding these yet, but we are not including any financing costs, uh, in the estimate. So there, we've identified 25 lots that all, uh, bought and would receive an assessment for this project. There is one vacant lot here, um, that would also be assessed or is proposed to be included for an assessment. And based on the, the project costs and the 25 units, assuming that the city pays 50% of the total project cost, it would yield an assessment amount of $2,930 per unit.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Well, there's gonna, there's gonna have to be some bonding, at least for the assessment half, if the residents aren't, you know, paid at all, I'm not sure of that, so, so there's gonna have to be some cost figured in for that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, and we've, uh, already been in initial conversations with Bruce Kimmel, the city's financial advisor. I think he's trying to gather some information to find out the best strategy. His last email, I think he, he stated that it's his initial opinion that this would likely be a, uh, I don't remember the wording he used, but basically going to local banks and, and, uh, asking them for certificate of indebtedness or whatever the, the term is. And so I don't know if, what those rates would be.
He's saying due to the relatively small size of these projects, city's likely to use some road and bridge funds to pay for a portion. Rather recommend city solicit bond purchase proposals from local and regional banks. That approach gives flexibility on timing and might ha, might not, we might not have with a full competitive bond sale.
Now, I believe the full competitive bond sale is the, the more involved process, which, uh, results in, in higher upfront costs. But if, you know, probably our next step is after this meeting, if we have some idea of how these projects may be financed, is to let him know that and, and get an idea of what the cost might be.
Question, uh, the attorney, when do you think council will want to hold the required public improvement hearing? How, how soon typically does something like that happen? And obviously, we'd have to know the bonding situation before that, right?
Yeah, generally, if it's a, a city that has a regular program, it's pretty well established. Um, you know, the, the funding percentages and the methods, um, a lot of times, directly following the receipt of this report, the city council would accept the report and call for the public improvement hearing. Uh, so it, it could be done as early as this coming Tuesday. I think there's gonna be a little bit of, or there should be a little bit of discussion on whether or not this project and the old Viking Boulevard project should be on the same timeline. I anticipate there to be more questions on the, the old Viking Boulevard project and, and likely, uh, you know, revised report based on council input. Along those same lines, we've talked about different strategies for, you know, there's, there's a public improvement hearing, which is normally done before any plans are prepared. Uh, it's basically the, the city's, uh, paid the cost for preparing this, but hasn't invested a lot, um, just to get a flavor for whether or not the residents would support it. The other hearing is the assessment hearing, and there are different strategies of doing that. In previous years, we have held, uh, the assessment hearings the same night as the public improvement hearings. The downside with that is you don't have actual contractor bids yet, uh, so you don't know exactly how much the project's going to cost. Uh, the method that, or the kind of the, the timeline that's outlined in this report is we would call for the assessment hearing after we received the contractor's bids, but before the council awarded the project. And that's kind of a, a strategy that myself and the city attorney have been using in other communities. And because at the close of the assessment hearing, if anybody objects, they have to notify the city in writing. And that, with that manner, you, you have construction bids, so you have a, a real good, uh, idea what the, the costs may be. And you can go ahead then and award the contract after you've had the assessment hearing, knowing that you're not going to have any objections. A third method, which still some cities and towns use, is to wait till the project's all done, completed. That way you have all your final cost, you're not forecasting anything, uh, and then have, hold the assessment hearings. So it would be for a project like this that objected to the assessment.
One of the things that, you know, as a council, we talked about wanting to wade into this so we could, we haven't been doing this and, and we, we'd like to get off on the right foot, you know, the first time out, so the intent is to try and be as cooperative with residents as we can. That sounds like a bad way to start, doing it that way and end up in court and...
Well, you mean, remember that you also have the public improvement hearing project, and at that point, you generally receive a pretty good flavor of whether or not the residents will support the, the project or not. But it's, it's usually not 100%. You know, it's, um, in my experience, uh, you know, a lot of projects will be 80, 85, 90% in favor. Uh, there's, there's usually a, a couple of residents that just say, no, I don't think we need it, I don't want to pay the, the assessment.
At least once you have the assessment hearing, they have to file if they're in opposition. And then, then you as a council know where you're at. You can, you know whether or not you want to proceed with the project or not.
Right, it's a two-step process. Their first step is to submit in writing their objection before the close of the assessment hearing. And then after that, they have a certain timeframe. I, I think it's, uh, 30 days to actual file, uh, uh, something in district court. And so sometimes, I mean, I've, I've, I've had experiences where a resident will say, you know, I don't like this, I'm gonna write, write, make my written objection, deliver that to the clerk before the close of the assessment hearing. But then, once they realize it's gonna cost a couple thousand dollars to engage an attorney and drop the paperwork, uh, they don't take the next step. Uh, and after that time expires, uh, we have, we, I have had one project where we've had a couple of, a couple of objections filed, and then we waited until that time expires to actually award the contract. Personally, I think that, that that, uh, method works the best, particularly for overlay projects, but there is a little bit of risk just because you're projecting the final cost.
Typically, you should project them a little high so that if, when you're all done, they come in under.
Right. Where that process doesn't work as well is, is in reconstruction projects, where you might run into, to soil issues that you weren't aware of there. You could have a, you know, a substantial change order for removing soils and, and replacing them with suitable fill. You know, sometimes it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars if there's bad soils that, that you didn't know were there. So that's, that's the downside. Again, with an overlay project, those risks are pretty minimal.
How much does it cost to have the plans and specs put together, roughly?
Um, probably in the, the neighborhood of $10,000. For Pinnacle Lake Estates, it's a little bit less work and less sheets.
So by not having them the same night, that's the amount, you're risking that...
Right.
By doing the assessment hearing later, you're risking, because you're already prepared the plans and specs, and if you get enough opposition and you don't move forward, you're out, you're, you're out, you're out the feasibility study plus the 10, 10,000 for the plans and specs.
Correct.
And that's why in the past, we've always had real good luck of having them the same night. You know, we typically projected them numbers a little high, and then when it's all said and done, they've always come in under, and then everybody's been happy. And we've only, we did quite a few, and we only had one that, while we settled on a court, but there was one that followed through with an objection and the 30-day file those papers and...
Sure. Yeah, and you know, the, the, kind of the scary thing is it's, you know, you project costs, like right now, I'm projecting costs for what Batuminus is going to cost in, during the construction season of 2018. And even though it's only six or seven months away, it's like predicting what gas prices are going to be. You know, there could be world events that drastically affect the, the cost of oil, and you're just unable to predict those.
Right, and in that case, if something like that happened, you'd just have to have another assessment hearing.
Another assessment hearing or, yeah, or the city ends up paying a higher share.
Yep.
Other questions or comments on the Pinnacle Lake?
I'd like to find out the bonding side, what's, what would it cost the city to do it going through a local bank versus, we could look at it if we want to go through, uh, Bruce Kimmel, then you'd, you'd probably want to sell a higher dollar value of bonds to make it worthwhile. So then you might want to look at 2018, 2019, 2020 projects and project it out and bond enough for like a three-year bonding period. So that money would be, be paid back from assessments, and some of them might be future assessments a year or two down the road, but that'd be a way to get in that number up a little bit so you can get a little better prices on your bonds. And I think it'd be nice to weigh them two methods out to see which one is more cost-effective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yeah, my question was, what's the, is, you know, what do we know what the threshold is for going with a local bank versus, you know, going with a full-fledged bond for something like that? You know, or it's depending, you know, so, because, because we're all, we're gonna have to be doing this for, for a few years. And then it would be a matter of, yeah, the money's there, or do we pick up something else that we could add or do along with it? I guess that's a question for, not, not something that you're gonna be able to answer tonight.
You know, I, I do recall, uh, Mr. Kimmel stating that the, kind of the sweet spot for a bond sale is right around a million dollars. Somewhere close to that, maybe 800,000, you could still do a competitive bond sale, but when it gets much lower than that, the cost of having him, you know, it's basically him preparing a, a set of plans and specs for the bond sale, similar to, to what we do for the road construction project. And that cost just doesn't outweigh the savings in interest rate at some point. The advantage of doing the, the competitive bond sale, of course, is your overall interest rate is lower.
Mm-hmm. So if we were at a million dollars, if we had to get to a million dollars and we're looking at 200,000 a year, now we're looking at not maybe three years, but almost four.
So if we're gonna pursue that, we'd need to hear from Bruce.
Bruce, and then somebody would have to check with their local bank, a couple of local banks to see what they would, kind of programs they have, what kind of interest rates.
So, Corey, is that something typically you do?
I have not in the past, no.
When, when we were looking at the, uh, refin, or financing the equipment...
That was something Bruce contacted. And we did a, we did a local sale to the bank, so he's still...
Bruce did that, he contacted the banks?
And he's still had a bidding process out there to local banks. And we had, Community Pride was one of the banks, and the Iron River State Bank was another bank that we did.
Would in, in your record somewhere, we know what that cost is to have him do that?
I don't know, you might be able to find that. I'm not sure we have that.
I do remember him saying that we'd want to have a higher bond if we can make it competitive. So let's see the council. I want to find out what the banks would do on the, the lower amount, and then find out from Bruce what, if we, if we were to bond to multiple years, what would be... The lower amount and then find out from Bruce what, if we, if we were to bond to multiple years, what to be looking at. Because the other thing is, you know, who knows what bond prices are going to be in coming years as well. I mean, that's another one you can predict. The way things are going, that likely would be higher.
I believe that's what we need to do next before we. Hold this hearing so that we know what the cost is going to be for the bonds.
I agree. I mean, you don't want to go in there with question marks and not have a clue as to what, it's somewhere between here and here. We don't know what that is yet. So with that in mind, what do we do with what's before us right now? Because if we approved the feasibility. We still want to know. Well, put it this way, the feasibility report is incomplete until we know whether we're going to have financing for cost.
Yeah, I, I would say anything that's significant. You know, there is a, there is a line item for engineering, legal and administrative. I mean, there's nineteen thousand, two hundred in that column or in that row, you know. If they weren't very major, they could possibly be absorbed in that. In that column. If they're eight or ten thousand, on the other hand, though, that will make a difference, so.
So we should see, you know, Cory can find in her records what fees. Bruce's firm charged previously.
I think also what fees if any the, the banks would charge for the bond sale or if there's any other. Any other fees. Um, I know with a, a full competitive bond sale. There's actually bond attorneys that look through all the information and make sure that it's complete and ready to go to sale with a. Set, you know, doing a sale to a local bank, I'm not sure if that's the case, but.
Let's have Cory check with Bruce to see if he can answer them questions for us or.
Yep.
Counsel, agree? All right, so we're going to have similar questions on the Old Viking Boulevard, but is there. Some of the things that. Bruce brought up. On Old Viking. Couple of things, Councilman Bettinger and. Engineer Nelson were talking that the feasibility report we have here shows. Uh, Old Viking to be twenty-four feet. And therefore our. Batuminus cost reflects that and we've been told tonight it's twenty-two feet. Is it reasonable for overlaying to stay at the twenty-two feet at this point?
Yes, it is. We'd only want to overlay the existing one to the road.
You don't want to.
Um, you know, we could also, if, if we're looking at paving the approaches, we'd, we could also figure that in, so. Depending on the direction. The number, the quantity will likely go down, but probably not the full five hundred.
Your recommendation would be to pave the approaches or overlay the approaches?
It would be, yes.
That isn't reflected in these numbers right now?
Correct.
So with the twenty-two feet width and. Uh, overlaying the approaches, if I could get a new number from you?
You would, yeah, and, and in addition to that. And there are a couple of things that I just wanted to point out to the council on the Old Viking Boulevard, so. Different than the Pinnacle Lake Estates project, we are proposing an aggregate shoulder on Old Viking Boulevard. Uh, there's not as many finished yards or, you know, irrigated yards right to the road surface. So what we're showing is a, a two-foot wide aggregate shoulder. We do not have any quantities for topsoil, uh, which means that when we're, after we've overlaid. Uh, the. The road will require that the shoulder material be put in with a shoulder machine. But that's going to leave a little bit of a, a gravel lip between the, our new shoulder and the existing ground. You know, there is a method where you can now go in and, and feather in some topsoil, but. On three and a half miles of road, that'd probably add up to a pretty considerable. Additional cost. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that. You know, homeowners always, can always do some work next to that if they choose. But a lot of times when you do, when you have a aggregate shoulder next to a yard, you get some complaints about gravel in the yards and whatnot. You know, a few of the residents after the overlay. Uh, we also, similar, we don't have, uh, pull on any driveway separately or any concrete driveway replacements. And also there are no culvert replacements proposed with this project. So I just wanted to. To point that out, generally you don't replace culverts. With an overlay, but it would basically be leaving the existing drainage system alone. Uh, even with that, you know, what the changes.
Find with the ditches over there?
If, if money was no object, I would do some additional ditch work, particularly on this western side. There's, there's not much of a ditch. There's, there is a. You know, it, it seems to work. I, I don't drive it a lot after a rain to see, you know, we haven't surveyed it obviously to see if there's any real bad areas. But. It, I mean, it looks like the ditches are filled in on this western side.
I'm thinking, you know, there's some wetlands there. Is it near Ytrium? Can Ytrium and Wolfram there? And that water runs right out to the edge of the, the road. I don't know if that, you know, I, I've never paid attention to the road condition right there, but the water is right there on the edge of the road. So there's standing water there. Should that be. Run off to a wetland?
Are you talking about the corner of Spidey Paulson's there?
No. No, well.
Yet, it comes next street to the east.
Just to the east of there.
But that all runs away.
Kurt King's area there.
Oh, down by Kurt King?
Yeah. Is that a little further than that?
Yeah.
Kind of problem with that area, that pond you're talking about, from his front garden?
Yeah.
He puts that coal.
It's driveway culvert.
You mean this blue pills or something in the water to make it turn blue or green or whatever you want to call it? He puts that coal put up. I've talked to him before about it.
Yeah, because I know there's water right on the edge of the road there, so.
In this location here?
I think so.
He jumped a bunch of class five in the ditch.
It's got the U-shaped driveway.
And then back, as you were saying, back by Paulson's there by the, Basalt.
There, there's a culvert on our Old Viking for that, that was added.
The guy with the iron was true.
Yeah, it was added a long time ago.
Is it, is it functioning?
Yeah, I don't, that used to get pretty high, used to get rid of it on the road, but it don't, really don't anymore. You missed one lot. There's a lots, you have March fifty-nine, there's one lot to the south of that. Oh. It's hidden behind it.
Here?
It's tucked right behind there, yeah, they come up, yeah.
Well, with that, and, and on this one, I would like to have kind of a, almost a one-by-one discussion or maybe not a one-by-one discussion, but kind of go through. Some of the, the unique properties. And if the council are ready, we'll go ahead and do that now. Starting on the western edge, we have a, a small-year-old pond property, we'll call it. The property is a, a shared bond between the county and the city. And so that would not receive an assessment, it's not buildable. Kind of moving along to the east, now we get to the, now the historical properties. And you will notice that, you know, there, they have four properties or four separate PIDs and there's, we're showing four separate. Benefiting properties. So they would receive four assessment units. You know, they do have quite a bit of frontage. As we continue to the east, uh, just on the west side of Basalt Street. There's a, a fairly large agricultural parcel and they actually front on to Basalt Street. And so I am not showing. An assessment for them. Uh, we've, you know, I'm pointing this out because different cities deal with these in different manners. Cities that may assess on the front foot and say, hey, we're, we're doing an improvement next to your property. We're going to levy an assessment against your property, but usually when it's by the unit, if you don't directly front on to the improvements, you don't receive an assessment.
That property's for sale right now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Another strategy that some cities use is they assess based on. Uh, if they were to subdivide, how many lots could they potentially subdivide and have front on to the improvements? You know, I, I think that's tougher with an overlay project because the, the life extending, extending benefit is. Generally understood to be ten years. We hope it's going to be in service for longer than that, but ten years is the standard for an overlay, twenty years is the standard for a new road. And so then you have to start thinking about the likelihood that that property's going to subdivide within the next ten years. Moving, continuing on, on the east side of Ytrium, there's a, a different colored number and it's a, starts with one. Uh, that's because they appear to have an accessory structure that, that fronts on to Old Viking. And they have, their main driveway is on Ytrium. And so we're proposing a half of an assessment amount for them. That's what I've done, or that's what other communities have done. But that is something that the council could provide input on or direction on and whether or not they feel that's appropriate.
His main access is on, on Old Viking and his accessory building access is Ytrium. It's the other way around.
So is it the other way around?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that will. Between Sodium Street and Cleary, we have two parcels, I believe one's a forty and one's a, maybe a. Ten or so, or so, and, uh, again, just two assessment units for those two large parcels. On the east side of Cleary, there's a property that abuts Old Viking, but the houses clearly fronts out to. County Road sixty-six, so they are not shown as receiving an assessment.
If they were to develop though, would they access?
You know, I don't think, this is where the road is, has settled and it's kind of.
It's all low.
Yeah, so they couldn't cross or they couldn't have a driveway out to Old Viking.
Is that where, is that where we're sliding off?
It is.
Into as well?
But twenty-six and twenty-seven had development potential and this one potentially had, could have development potential as well. Um, here we have. Several houses that are on a cul-de-sac, you know, they have to use Old Viking to get to their. To get their, their homes, but they are not proposed, or there's no assessment proposals or units shown. That's, again, that's something that, uh, some cities and towns have policies that maybe they would be assessed a quarter unit or, or some other number, but that gets tricky on.
Well, and we have done that in the past, the township's done that bef, and hadn't done that before because I was assessed in a circumstance like that where, when we did, uh, one hundred and eighty-fifth and Jasper. You know, I live off of there, but for me to get out either way, I have to use either one of those. So we were assessed a portion of that, so we have done it in the past.
Sure. Yeah, no, a lot of, a lot of cities do, but it's, it's, again, it's gonna, if, if we propose some assessment amounts here, just on the other side of the road where they're just as likely to use Old Viking. Um, it might not be as justifiable because they have. Another way in and out.
No, and again, I mention it because we, I know we've done it in the past.
Sure.
Where if that's, you have to use it, you have to use it either in or out one way.
Right.
Yeah, we did a quarter assessment, but remember.
Well, and, and it's true, the south part of West Fordbrook or Fordbrook. You do have the option going down to twenty-two. You have another way out. North of Old Viking, you don't. You have to use Old Viking either in or out.
Right, I think. And that cul-de-sac is really the only. The only area that has necessary access. I mean, there's probably a lot of people that are on Basalt Street and, uh, Ytrium here also that, that uses Old Viking. But they, they technically have another way in or out. That's a tough call whether it's equitable to assess these units a quarter unit.
But same token, that's, to me, that's why the city's willing to pay. That fifty percent, we're paying for part of that is for the other people that are using your road. So that kind of offsets that. And I'd find it hard and I think they'd, especially, uh, Fordbrook to the north, it's a gravel road and you assess them for a blacktop and they live on a gravel road. I don't think it was set very well.
It would be a tough sell.
Yeah.
So then this last property, uh, here, it looks like they have some land that could potentially be split.
I think that's, there's two parcels there in the corner. There, there's a parcel just for the, where the house is and the.
Yeah, there's the issue on a separate parcel there.
Yeah.
But right now, uh, we are not showing them as, as receiving an assessment.
What was the situation on twenty-nine? Far right.
Forty-eight or P.
Twenty-nine, uh, just one assessment. And again, that's. You know, and it's, it's. It's a tough decision for the city because, you know, there's no structures on this property. For all we know, they don't use the road at all. But yet they have access to the road. But yet they have access to the road, and so that's, uh, we have every right to assess them.
It's being, it's being firm, so that it's being used something, not to a great extent, but.
Yeah, and some cities would say, you know what? You could split so many lots against the front of the road, we're gonna assess you eight units.
Uh, um, same product that Paul was on, we did deferred assessments, quarter assessments. Can't remember, we did like four per forty?
I guess.
So if they didn't, but if they didn't split, then after any, they just paid one. But they split, then they had to pay deferred assessments.
So defer until they develop?
Yeah.
And I thought, I remember we talked about that too, that in situations like that, we would defer it, so if they did develop, they'd have to come back and pay it. But that was, that was one, one way to solve it.
True. And then, and that, that is, uh, you know, I think that'd be a good way, especially if you wanna encourage somebody to access that road if they develop. You know, but I'd rather, as the property develops, that they have some internal roads similar to, uh, quiet, I don't know, the Hop and Hells here, where they limit the access to Old Viking and not have everybody.
You're saying by the deferred, deferred assessment, they'd be more likely to exit onto Old Viking, or less likely?
Less likely.
Well, I think it would be more likely. I think if, uh, if it's a four thousand dollar assessment, or possibly lower, we're adding units. You know, so if you, I don't know how many lots they could fit in there and meet our, our lot widths, but let's say it's, they got eight, um, you know, thirty-two thousand dollars in deferred assessments versus maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars to go over.
They would still try not to build a road regardless, yes, whether you did deferred assessments or not though, so, right? And nobody wants to build a road if they don't have to, if they can do four tans, or whatever they, whatever they can do to get them number lots, if they can front on Old Viking, a deferred assessment would be cheaper than building a road. And if you, if there wasn't deferred, it's way cheaper than building a road.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to, to raise some of these items tonight, and again, I don't expect that we're gonna have an answer to solve the problem, um.
What about the Buddhist temple there, are they accessible?
Uh, yeah, we did ask the city attorney, and his response was that he did not think they were exempt because it wasn't a public, um, like a public use. Basically, it was a, a private religious organization. Um, in contrast, we also inquired about the cemetery property, there's two cemetery properties, but the smaller one, I think is a four acre parcel, and the, the larger one next to it, I think is closer to twenty-three acres. Uh, and those properties, the city attorney advised, could not be assessed. Um, moving on, on the south side, we have, we have a, a large parcel, number forty-seven, with only one assessment. At the intersection of Cleary and Old Viking is a property in the south that accesses Cleary with no assessment. Similar thing on the other side. Fifty-six was interesting because their address actually, uh, seemed like it was, I don't have addresses there unfortunately, but seemed like it was off of Fordbrook, but yet their main driveway seems to come off of Viking.
Do they have two parcels there, fifty-six?
Yeah, I think that's just how it shows up on the county G I S because of the creek running through it, but, I, I think it's just all one parcel. Uh, directly below fifty-nine, Councilmember Bettinger pointed out that there's a, another property that, that looks like it must be a flag lot, or, or must not even be a flag, it must just have an easement because of, the property lines doesn't show a, a flag. So they would be included. I don't think there are any other, so, you know, with, with the, the project estimate that we have in the report of five hundred thirty-five.